The zoning board of appeals to order for the year 2024. Today's date is January 29th. If we could all stand and face the flag under the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Anderson, if we could have roll call, please.
Okay. Member McDonald?
Here.
Member Seer?
Here.
Member Willner?
Here.
Member Allen is absent. Member Creel?
Here.
Member Krug?
Here.
And Chair McAlpine?
Here. So, based on our typical seating of a board, we have seven folks present. Because of the type of variance request that you have, I just want to state right now that there will only be six of us hearing this item and that you will need five of us to approve it before we proceed. So, if you would like, we can put you on the agenda for our February meeting in which you would have a seventh person available to sit. And at that point, you would need two-thirds of us to say yes. So, that would be four?
It would still be five.
I'm sorry. Five of seven.
Five out of seven rather than five out of six tonight.
So, it's your choice, but we want to make sure that you understand that you would need five of the six sitting here. And if you chose to postpone that meeting and have us hearing at the next one, you would still need five, but you'd have seven of us listening.
Oh, I'll hear you then.
Okay. All right. So, we are going to proceed with six members seated tonight. And in order to approve the request for the variance, there will be five yes votes needed. Can we have approval of the agenda as presented, please? A motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Perfect. All right. And then we can do a all-call vote, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So, all in favor of approving the agenda for the January 9th, 2024 zoning board of appeals meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Is anyone opposed? The agenda has been approved. Next up is the approval of our minutes from our meeting that was held on November 13th, 2023. They were provided in the packet that we all received. If anyone has any requested changes or additions, we can entertain those at this time. And if not, we will take a motion and a second to approve the minutes from that meeting.
A motion to approve is presented.
Perfect. Any other questions? Okay. All in favor of approving the minutes from the November 13th, 2023 meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So, the meeting?
Who supported that? I'm sorry.
I did.
So, the minutes from the November 13th, 2023 meeting have been approved. We do not have any old business on our agenda tonight. So, next up would be new business. It's application number PBA 0124 regarding parcel 042517-358-17 that is located at 2114 11 Mile Road, the north side of 11 Mile between Henley and Berkeley. The petitioner is here tonight requesting a use variance for a non-conforming use of a gas station. And that currently is located in M1 Industrial District. If you can go ahead and just tell us about the request, please.
Yes. 2114 11 Mile is requesting a use variance for non-conforming use of a gas station at the property that's in an M1 Industrial District. The property had previously been used as a gas station but lost the legal non-conforming status. 2114 11 Mile dates back to 1956 with the use of a gas station. The previous business, Henley Gas and Service Center, was a service as a gas station until approximately 2013, 2014. I provided pictures of Google that shows where there was prices posted on the signage and then the gas prices were no longer on the signage around 2015. Property continued as an automobile service repair establishment until the property was sold. A warranty deed was recorded with the county, Oakland County, March 8th, 2022, to F&amp;L Berkeley LLC. Property is currently vacant. We have no definitive date. Has been confirmed on when the automobile service repair establishment seized its operation. M1 does not permit a use of a gas station under permitted or special use. So, variance violations have been issued since 2022, including work being done with no permits, property maintenance, snow and grass. A code violation was issued, 103, 2023, when signage was changed with no permit. A business license was applied for November 13th, 2023, and that was denied. There are two possible non-conforming ordinances that could apply that are listed out in the packet provided, section 138, 151, and 138, 153. We ask the zoning board of appeals to determine approval or denial for a use variance to allow 2114 11 Mile the business use of a gas station. For a variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards in section 138, 606 of the zoning ordinance, based on findings of facts. We request the zoning board of appeals to determine if undue hardship exists on the property and the request used, I'm sorry, and the requested use variance should be granted. Motions for approval and denial were provided in your packet.
Thank you very much. Does anyone, any of my fellow zoning board commissioners have any questions for Ms. Anderson about the petition or the information that's been presented?
I just have one. When it was just a repair, that was a conforming, that was appropriate for the type of area?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. So, if we do not have any other questions for Ms. Anderson, I will go ahead and ask the petitioner to come to the microphone. If you can please state your name, your address, and tell us why you believe that you should, this variance should be approved.
Good evening, board. My name is Farid Kaji. I purchased this property about a year to a year and a half ago. With my attention was already a gas station. Not knowing this, it's not in zoning where you can't open a gas station. The gas station has the pumps on site, has the price signs on the side, has everything the way it looks as a gas station, as a service gas station. Okay? The only thing we did to the site, we painted the outside and we changed the facing of the price sign. That was done by a contractor, not by us. They were hired, companies called Basel Construction. And we did not know they did not pull a permit. They got paid, fully paid for the job. And that's when, when we finished that work, we went to the city to try to open. Before that, I'm sorry, I missed a part. That gas station was not selling gas for these years due to a DEQ problem. The DEQ made them shut the tanks down for non-compliance. We have an approval letter submitted with the package that the state of Michigan and DEQ, Alara, gave us an approval to open this gas station as a gas station. All the tanks passed, no leaks underground. It's fully functioning gas station. You know? And it was outdated. We painted it and changed the sign. That was the only thing we did to the building. So, we seeking to reopen it as a gas station.
Okay. Do we have any questions for the petitioner?
I have a question. So, when the, you said the DEQ wouldn't allow them to open it because of non-compliance. So, what wasn't in compliance?
So, back when they stopped selling gas, they weren't in a compliance with the DEQ, which I have the old owner with me here.
What wasn't in compliance? Or, I mean, what isn't in compliance that now is in compliance?
So, there is rules and regulation where you have to test the tanks, okay? Where they had financial problem, they were not even, we had to cut the ground for the DEQ, for the inspectors to go inside the tanks. And they inspected the tank. That was very costly. We spent over $150,000 to do that work. And the city is aware of it. The ground was cut for over a month and a half to two months and to the point we got a violation where the ground had to be closed. And I spoke to the inspector and told him I cannot close the ground before the DEQ gives me an approval or denial because they would have to inspect the tank. So, they went in. The old owner did not have $150,000 to spend on the station. You know? Us knowing we can't opening this gas station or we have to, you know, lost this zoning, you know, we would never spend $150,000. We didn't ever even bought it.
May I ask why you did all that before coming to us? Did you know when you bought it?
Did they tell you it could operate as a gas station?
Yes.
When you bought it?
Yes. The owner?
Be able to?
Yes.
Because you, the property was given a variance to operate as a gas station. And after a period of time, if that property is not used?
I don't think they had a variance. My understanding is it was just, it was conforming at the time it was operating.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Sorry. Sorry.
So?
It went out of conform?
Right. Right. When it stopped operating.
For 90 or 100, so six months essentially when it lasted.
So, we, I'm sorry, we did not know because they stopped selling gas, that means they lost their conformity. You know? And if they did, why were the pumps left where they exactly built, you know, in the islands for as many, why didn't the city force them to remove all the stuff that belongs to the gas?
That's someone's property. I mean, I don't think we can force someone to take that away, can we?
We do have ordinances in regards to gas stations when they are not operating. And I guess this was not noticed.
So, that would be a separate ordinance?
Mm-hmm.
And a separate issue. What you're here tonight is?
But it would not be in zoning.
It is in the zoning ordinance, but a completely separate issue than what you're here to consider.
Right. That's what I'm saying. We don't, that's not what we're debating. It's whether or not someone should have came and told them to take away the pumps.
Correct.
That has no bearing on what we should be considering.
No, that's just to answer why, why we went and spent all this money because, or was a gas station.
So, is it still Henley Auto Repair that is the occupant?
No.
Is the owner, the owner's, are you F&amp;L Berkeley?
I am. I am F&amp;L Berkeley, yes.
So, it says the occupant is Henley Auto Repair on the violations.
That was before we knew the ownership had changed. Or the, I'm sorry. They still had the Henley signage up there. It was just this past October when they changed the signage from the Henley to Sitco that grabbed the attention.
And then obviously, the business license as well would have?
That's when we seeked out the business license to be applied for.
Yeah. Got it.
Does the packet, I don't, I can't find it right now. Does that have the DEQ approval included in it?
Yeah.
I don't know why I can't find it.
I mean, I don't know. Is that on?
Right behind the application.
Okay.
It says the tanks are D-tagged. What does that mean?
It just says it was, an inspection was conducted for the reference property, dah, 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 dah.
The very, but the last sentence says inspection result. Tanks D-tagged, approved.
So, when the DEQ make you stop selling gas, they red-tag the tank. That's their way of telling you, you cannot, basically putting a lock on the tank in order for you to put gas underground, they have to come and remove their tag.
Well, it says the inspection result is tanks D-tagged, approved.
Yep.
So, I'm assuming the D-tagging gives the approval?
Got it.
And the tag, the tag tanks would then be in violation?
Yep.
Got it. Okay. I don't want anything else.
So, at any point, did you look at what the property was zoned when you purchased it? Because that's not, it can't, it's not the right zoning for this, to begin with.
Correct.
Right.
Not until they came in and applied for the business license in November.
But I'm just saying during the transaction, the real estate?
So, in the year and a half that you owned this property, what?
So, in a year and a half, Henley's Auto Repair was, was working fixing cars.
You bought it as the owner and they still had a?
And I still had them as a tenant. Okay? We've had multiple inspections from fire department, from, they had the business license. Nobody told us. I've met with inspectors in the site. Nobody told us. And they've seen, when you gonna open? They all asked me, when you gonna open? That was the question from inspectors, from court enforcement, from all the cops in the city of Berkeley. They all stopped by, when you gonna open? How soon can you open? Okay?
So, is your intent to continue to do repairs and have gas or just gas, just gasoline?
We're, we're not touching the repair facility right now. As you know, Mr. Henley, he's an old man and his son was, you know, he has some health issues. His son was going to take over the business and they've just taken a break. They might go back. If not?
Become a tenant of yours again?
Yes.
So, for how long has no, has it been vacant?
About four to five months.
But you yourself could not operate this in anything other than a gas station. In other words, you're not a mechanic?
I'm, I'm not a mechanic. And?
No.
I don't have anything else, bro.
Does anyone else have any questions? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, we'll close this portion of it. Do we have any correspondence or anyone from?
No. Nothing was received.
So, we've received no other communication that we need to read into the record. Okay. So, we obviously have the, the request for the use variance in front of us. And at this point, we can continue our discussion to determine whether or not we should approve the request as presented.
Yeah. I mean, to me, unfortunately, like, they didn't do their due diligence. It's, you know, once, it's very clear. Once a non-conforming use is stopped, it remains vacant for 180 days. Any subsequent use after that is supposed to be conforming. No, it says, uses the words, remains vacant. And it wasn't necessarily vacant, but they weren't performing that.
What was in viola, what was the part that was in question?
I would, I would be inclined to approve the, the non-conformity just because I feel like the, the, the property will sit and nothing will be done with it if, if it's not used in the manner that it had been in the past.
It might, but that, that really shouldn't be a factor in our, in our decision.
No, but I do think it would be better to have it be in use, have the tanks continue to be, if it's active, have the tanks inspected. There's more of a stake in maintaining that than if, if we deny it, then I feel like it could really fall into disrepair. And especially with the tanks there, that would concern me.
I don't disagree 100%. However, that really, to me, that shouldn't be a factor.
So, what we need to consider is the fourth, are the four factors, correct? There's the four factors for this. One is the building or land cannot be reasonably used for any other use permitted by right or by special use permit in the current zoning district.
It can be used as a?
I mean, obviously, there's other things that can go in there. It could be a repair shop.
But would it need, for other things, for many other things, would the tanks need to be removed? Would that be a concern with having another business on that property? Would they have to be removed in order to make that more usable?
Maybe.
Yeah. I mean, I agree. It's, you know, the repair shop element of it, I drive past this place every day. In the last five, or last year, you told me that someone was operating a business side of there would have fooled me. So, the fact that, you know, the tanks are now conforming, now I get, they went out of order here, but, you know, the lapse in non-conforming use, I know this is maybe a little bit off criteria, but it's not the fault of the current owner. I'm reading these requirements here. It, it looks like a gas station, smells like a gas station, quacks like a gas station. Seems to me that it certainly is not going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood. And it's been a gas station more or less since 1956. Need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner.
Or previous property owner. You know, the rest of?
So, when did you, I, I guess, we don't?
You can open for a public hearing, part two.
We can?
If, if you're, when you're ready for, after your discussion, open up to the public hearing.
Okay.
But it does say, yeah, you're right. It does, not his fault, but it does say actions of a prop, of the property owner or previous property owner. The previous property owner let it, you know, they stopped selling gas. They let it last.
Do we know when the zoning was changed? That, that?
They lost that.
That they lost that?
Oh, that probably, that was probably back in the eighties or?
Probably decades ago.
Mm-hmm.
I remember something going on a number of years ago with Durst Lumber and that whole stretch there of rezoning and?
That probably would have been when it went to industrial.
Outdoor storage and that type of stuff.
Yeah. Because it was a gas station back in 1956.
Okay.
So, it, I'm sorry. It did say, so, 180 is the, 180 days is the, is the time period in which it converts. How much beyond that 180 days has it not been operating as a gas station?
Well, let's see. He said what, four to, oh, as far as, as a gas station?
Well, I guess I'm just wondering how long it?
Gas station?
It's been like eight years.
Yeah. It's been years.
It'd be 181 days. It really, you know, you can't.
Right. No, I'm just, I'm just, it's not, it's not like it was 181 days. I guess that's my point, that it was that close.
But even if it was, I mean, but, yeah, it's not that close.
Right. No. Because, because sometimes we've had situations where we're like, okay, whatever happened.
Right. Sounds like it's been since 2015 or something.
Uh, or 2012, maybe? Even?
It's had, it's had, Laura had, I'm sorry, I found a very, violations as early as 2013.
Yeah. But since 2015, no gas has been posted.
Yep.
Eight years.
So, if we go, did we go through all the criteria?
No, no, no. I'm so sorry. Sorry. Okay. No, no, you're good. The second one is the need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property.
I don't know how that's not applicable here. Not many properties have two full gas tanks underneath the concrete of it.
Exactly what, how I feel too.
Right. Okay. So, you feel that there are some unique circumstances?
Definitely. It's, it's not like they're looking for the variance and they're going to install the tanks. You know, the tanks are already there and have been there.
And no one's pulling them out of the ground anytime soon. That's for damn sure.
We all good on that one or?
Yeah.
Okay. So, the proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood?
I don't feel that it would unless there's more traffic or, but otherwise, it's, it's been there.
People bought there?
Right.
With seeing, whatever.
Right.
It's not going to change the look.
No. Right. I'm just saying the pumps have been there.
A&amp;D is where you have the issues, really.
And then the final point is the need for the variance is not the result of the actions of the property owner or previous property owners.
It is to me. I mean, clearly it is.
Previous property owners didn't maintain their gas, the, the tanks, and they lost, they were D-tagged.
For whatever reason.
Yeah.
Just as easily cuts the other way, though. I mean?
Or the previous owner was not aware of the zoning change that was made at the, when that was made that took having a gas station in that district.
Because it was grandfathered in.
Basically.
Yeah.
Correct. Grandfathered in and probably as a business owner didn't really think, you know?
Right.
About that.
We can ask him. He's here. I know.
Okay. So, we have to reopen the?
Well, just a public hearing.
Okay. So, we're going to, so if you would like to come back, we're going to have reopen this part, or open a public hearing again so you can state your name and address for the record.
My name is Carlo Fashpor. Address is 2600 Florence Drive, Rochester Hills. Me and my father are the previous owners. And we bought it, you know, we served Berkeley for about 30 years. And it was gas and service the whole time. And like Mr. Farid said, the reason why we stopped selling gases because one, you know, one day the DEQ came by or the state came by and said, hey, there's rules that you have to test these tanks. And if they don't pass tests, this is what's involved, and this is what's involved, and this is what's involved. Well, we, when we found out what's involved, we just didn't have the money to go through with it. And so, what the DEQ did was they put a little tag on the tanks and said, well, if you ever do comply, open them back up, you're a gas station again. And it just, I mean, business was business and we just were never able to gather the money. And he got a little older and I just started mechanicking. But, you know, as far as seizing to be a gas, I'm, I'm sure there are rules to say how long you should be a gas station after you close them down, but we never knew. You know, we, we didn't know that we were never zoned for a gas station. We bought it under, I mean, it was a gas station before we bought it. It's still a gas station today. You know, I pass by it all the time. And I'm afraid it's, you know, it, like you guys were saying, you know, there's tanks underground. The dispensers are there. The building looks like a gas station. It's, I mean, it's going to be a gas station for, you know, unless somebody puts in a ton of money, which neither me or Mr. Farid have, you know, or I wouldn't bother, but Mr. Farid has, it's never going to change from being a gas station. And what he's doing, he's beautifying it. He's going to beautify it. He's going to make everything look nice and, you know, comply with every rule that you guys have. Hopefully, you know, you guys see it that way.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions?
When did you buy it?
Oh, boy. So, me and my father were partners with another guy. His name was Joe Reboy. He bought it about 30-some years ago. I, I don't know exact date.
Okay.
But after 10 years, we were paying him off as we went to buy him out. And after that, it became all ours, including the land, the business, the building, the tanks. And about 20 years ago, we remodeled. We had tank work done 20, 25 years ago, put new dispensers in. And we ran it for a long while until, like you said, I think you said seven years ago? Eight years ago?
Yeah. It looks like 2013.
That's when the DEQ came by and said, hey, you're out of compliance. It's been a long time. You got to test these tanks. And that's when we were like, we made the decision. We were like, all right, well, if we ever do one day get the money, we will open them back up.
Did you say at the time what that cost would be?
At the time, it was even more than what, probably what it is now. I mean, at the time, we were looking at $200,000 because they wanted us to take the tanks out completely and put new fiberglass tanks in. They didn't have the technology what we have today where they can go in and do certain things inside the tank. They wanted us to pull them fully out. So, we were like, oh, my God, you know, this is business and might not even be worth that much, huh? When am I going to ever make my money back? And so, we made the choice of, you know, no more gas and we stayed just with service. And I've wrenched my whole life.
So, I'm looking at the summary and just to kind of come back to us if there's no more questions. Um, it basically says for the variance to be approved by the zoning board of appeals, it shall meet the standards of the suction based upon fact. We were, and they're requesting that we determine if there's an undue hardship exists on the property, and the requested variance would be then granted. Oh, I'm sorry. I need to close the public hearing.
Do you want to say anything else?
I'm sorry, before we do that, yes, if you would like to come back and just state your name and address again.
Uh, Farikaji, seven-six-one, Easton Court. I'm the owner of two-one-one-four, uh, West eleven Mile, Brickley. I just wanted to bring to the board's attention, there is four tanks underground. Okay? Those tanks, uh, any property has been a gas station. To change it to something else, I cannot tell you how much would it cost just to clean up and how deep they would have to go underground to clean up a- after these tanks. I just wanted to bring that. And nobody would want, they, the state would not even allow to put a restaurant on there. Not allowed to put anything who's got to do with food on there.
And I think that's what we were just getting to, that point of, we can review against the four standards, and then it's, it's a matter of determining if making it, this property become anything different is the hardship, right? Isn't that what we're?
Right.
Thank you both.
And I mean, I, it, to me, I think it's a little bit, I'm sorry.
All right, so I'm sorry. I will close that part, the, the second, uh, public hearing regarding this variance request.
You know, I mean, the, not the result of the property owner, the previous property owner, you could make a strong argument that the standards changed. I mean, the, the environmental standards have gotten more stringent. It's a similar, I would consider it similar to, you know, the homes built, a long time ago, didn't have a egress window in a basement that's now required. And so is it the fault of the previous homeowner that sold the house, or is it the result of the standards having changed that renders this to be, um, you know, part of our criteria? I, I, hard time faulting the people here.
And the very.
I agree. It's not their, I mean, I, it's not about the person or the people. I feel bad.
Well, it is. We're talking about the property owner, the previous property. We have both of them here.
Right, but it's not about them personally, and it's, they did, the previous property owner did do something that now took it out of conformance for that period of time.
Whether they realize it or not, their actions did result in that.
And the building can be used re- reasonably.
So then the question I guess I look at is, is the need for the variance due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property? So if we look at the fact that there are four tanks and the likelihood of someone coming in and paying the amount of money that they would need to do to remove those tanks and ensure that everything underground, then that piece of property can be converted to another use, is that uni- is that a unique circumstance?
I, I would say it is.
Yeah.
That one item, yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, but you can't use the co- I, I mean, I guess you're so. Yes, it is a unique circumstance. However, you can't use the co- you can't factor in what it would cost to ma- to create something else.
Well, we can look at undue hardship.
May, may I interject for just a moment? There are other properties in the city that have underground tanks.
Okay.
That are used for other, the tanks not themselves, but those properties are used for other things. There are probably properties in the city where there are underground tanks that we don't even know about. So I don't know that the fact that this.
It's under the ground. You don't necessarily have to remove it to, to use it as something.
And that would be, uh, Eagle issue, the former MDEQ. Um, but just because it has tanks, I want to just point out, doesn't make it a unique property. There are other properties that have tanks.
I, I have a question. The zoning M one, that's where, that, that zone is M one, right?
Yes.
And it says, it, and it's not, there's no way they can get a special use in that, in an M one?
M one and, and the industrial district is not permitted or special use.
I got it.
I have a question too. Um, as far as the best, as far as the city and the surrounding area there, having it be operating, would that be better that it would get inspected more regularly? Like you said, there are tanks, um, that we may not even know about.
Yeah.
Would they be leaching into the ground where if this is being used, is it going to be inspected more frequently? And would it be a, a better, a safer thing for the neighborhood, I guess?
That part of the inspections would be with the DEQ, Eagle and such.
And are they done regularly once it starts operating?
I'm not sure how.
I think once a year.
Once a year?
So that would be completely out of the city's jurisdiction.
Yeah, we would just do the building inspections.
And that. Do you get notification of the, um, DEQ inspecting them?
No, it's completely outside of our operation.
Yeah.
Kid.
Well, I had it, wait, hold on, um.
The, the fear of what might happen, I guess, is not, you know, I get it, I understand, but it's really not our, that's not, it has nothing to do with us, whether the tanks are inspected or what, you know, it's basically, we're only here to, to decide if, if this now non-conforming property can be get a variance for a used variance, which is a, it's a. To me, I don't see it. I don't, I don't see it meeting the criteria, but. Sounds like I may be the only one. I don't know. Especially it's not a unique, so now that the tanks don't make it unique, the building can reasonably be used for, for something else. And, and it is.
What could continue to operate as a
As a service station.
Repair station without the gas.
Something else.
I, I dispute it's not unique. I mean, I take your point that it's not the only one, but if you surveyed all the different tanks in this, in the area, it would be one of the few properties in this city that have
But someone made it, but someone made it unique by starting that as a gas station.
Yeah.
So if you take that one out, though, what about the other two where it can be reasonably used, uh, and the previous owner's actions resulted in this? I mean, those two items, you can't refute them.
I mean, and really, the variance is the result of someone stopping using it, whether or not they knew that they could just turn it.
I don't like it. I don't like.
I don't like it either, but they didn't turn it, they didn't, when they turned it off, there was implications.
Right.
Or when they stopped pumping gas, there were implications. They did not understand them, but there were.
Right. Personally, I, I would love for it to open back up as a gas station, but, you know, we have to follow the standards.
So in our, go ahead.
I, I think the thing is, though, we're not saying turn the building, you know, three buildings down from it, that's the, I forget what it is, or turn Durst Lumber into a gas station. We're saying rea- re can, reapprove or make this gas, former gas station, non-conforming. We're not saying, you know, take the house off of eleven mile and make it a gas station now.
I get it, yeah.
It's, uh, it was existing. And so I do, I do think it is unique to a certain extent as far as the tanks, wh- whether they're considered unique or not.
Right, but what about the other criteria?
Well, here, go ahead. Well, here's the situation. I mean, he bought it with the understanding of, I can have repairs and I can sell gas. Someone could have bought it for the idea of, I can just repair cars. I don't need to sell gas to make it financially profitable or to make my money. I mean, that's really what it comes down to. It can be used for something. It just does not pay out based upon the cost of what was paid, what he paid.
And there should have been some due diligence. I mean, when you buy a, a, a business, I, I mean, I don't know. I think you would go to the city and make sure you're I don't know. You're buying a business.
But once again, I.
I saw one question, please.
Wait, I, I have to, I ha- we have, we've closed the portion where you can speak, so let us just finish and we'll see if, go ahead.
If you have questions for the applicant, the applicant.
Okay, I'm sorry. So do we have a question? Is there, do you want to tell us something, or?
Yes.
Okay, but we, we don't have any questions for you yet, so let's see if we can get to.
Once again, I do think there was the repair place across the street next to the skate park. I wouldn't, I wouldn't feel compelled to approve that to be a gas station. It was never a gas station. I would not say, you know, let's turn it back into a ga- let's make it a gas station now. But I do feel more inclined to reapprove this as it is set up completely as a gas station. I do understand that he should have, when purchased, he should have done his due diligence, talked to the city, or, you know, if there was a.
I just have a prob- eight years is a long time for it not to be operating.
It's not a gas station.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see it. I mean, I, I get, I get what you're saying, and I.
The act, is it an action of the property owner?
Once they stopped using it as a gas station, I mean, the city did not come to them and say, you know, you're out of, you know, it's out of zoning. This didn't come up until he applied for the business license, basically?
Thank you very much. That was.
That's not, but our, I don't think our job is to go to them and say, you stop pumping gas, so just so you know, if, if a hundred and eighty days go by and you don't turn those tanks on, you're going to lose it. And he wouldn't have been able to afford to, to, to turn the tanks on anyways. So he would have been in that, yeah.
Well, so.
Or maybe he wouldn't, but.
If, right, but, but.
Deal with it?
If we approved it, if we approved the variance, what would be the negative part of that?
The negative is we're not following the, the, we're not, we're not.
So it's basically that we're just not following the.
Yes.
We are a public body designed to serve the city of Berkeley. I understand we have rules and guidelines, and I appreciate that, okay? I really do. But the idea we're going to throw this out, a hundred fifty thousand dollar investment, something that the city and the current property owner, and I would argue the previous property owner is not at fault for that regulations may or may not have changed and the cost was exorbitant. I think we have to look at this in a big picture scale to a certain degree.
But what we decide and what we, we have, i- it is very black and white for us. It's either yes or no.
Yeah, it's not how you feel or how we.
And for, I mean, we've had. Right, we've had plenty of things come in front of us that would be wonderful, but in the end of the day, it's beautiful.
We have a set of rules and standards that we have to follow. That's it. Nothing, I mean, it's black and, it is black and white with standards that we have to abide by. And whether you like it or not, I don't like it either. I know, I know it's a.
You can also postpone too.
All right, so we still have the option that I'm going to put on the table, and you might want to consider this because it may not be going in the direction you want it to go, given everyone's feedback. You would have one more person sitting here, and then you would have the potential of five of seven people saying yes versus convincing everyone but one of us to say yes.
So if you guys say no today.
You're done.
I have no cha- I have no chance to come.
He needs to come to the microphone.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. You need to come up and speak. So you have a question for, so yes.
So if, if I decide, if you guys said no today, I have no chance of reapplying?
Correct.
Well, it's one and done?
Yes.
I can appeal.
The ruling, you can't, yeah.
Yes, once we make a decision that that is, your request has either been approved or denied.
You would not be app- be appealing to the zoning board of appeals. You'd have to go through the court system after this.
Yes, I was just going to say, you're, you, you cannot come back to us and say, I want to talk about it a little differently, or I didn't like what you said, so I'm going to come up here and give a different story. We, our decision is final. You have other ways and recourse is to appeal that decision, but that results in you having to go to court and file a suit against the city, basically, because you disagree with our decision.
Again, just to bring to the board, okay, I had the police, the inspectors.
That, that, I, I'm sure there's.
So, so these things, you gotta put.
The police and the ins- the police and the, the police do not understand that you are not in compliance. They don't.
Right, but they are part of the city of Brickley and the inspector of the court enforcement that came. They are part of the city of Brickley. And all these years, where was the city ta- not telling you guys? Not telling the owner where, hey, you gotta remove these pumps. You are not a gas station in.
We don't, we would not come to you and say to remove the pumps. You could have chosen to, you, you, someone made a decision not to have those pu- those tanks meet the criteria that they needed to meet. We, we do not go to people who say one day they're going to be a hair salon and they stop operating that, oh, are you sure you want to do that? That's not what our, that's not what the city is responsible for.
So the ci- the city will like a building like that in this shape that we spent over seven hundred thousand on it between purchasing it and then putting the effort to the tank would like to make it remain a close just like that.
So those are not factors that we consider. I'm, I'm, I'm giving you the option of coming back in front of us in February because we can't take into consideration that the police didn't come or the inspectors didn't know that, that, that you had lost the zoning.
The amount of money you spent or anything.
Right, those, those people.
But all these are facts, you know, they're not.
But, but, but a police officer's not.
And you have a, you have a gas station in the city of Brickley, it looks exactly the same of my gas station, where no canopy, okay?
There, there, but there's, they are, they are conforming and they are allowed to operate in which they are operating right now, or else they wouldn't be doing it. If they were operating in a manner that was not allowed, we would not let them continue to operate.
You know, if the, if this is a remainder close, it's going to end up on foreclosure, it's going to end up with no taxes.
I'm not telling you it should remain closed. I'm giving you an option of coming back in front of us in February when you have another person here. I, we as a board cannot take into consideration the fact that the inspector did not tell you that you are out of compliance.
But it's not only, it's not only the inspector. It's I board, okay, let's.
We're just going in circles.
Yeah, sir, we have no, we cannot.
You have basically two choices, I think.
Yes, we cannot, we cannot, it is not our responsibility to make sure that you, you bought this or the people in the city who represent us in various different roles can tell, tell you you should be operating or can operate. I'm going to give you one more chance. Would you like to, us to vote tonight? Given what you heard, or would you like to come back in February? Because at that point, you still have an opportunity to share with us why this should be approved. You have one more person sitting here.
Okay, let me just discuss it.
Okay, because if not, there, you're going to have more costs incurred. You can either wait and take a chance, or you can cause, have more costs incurred potentially if you need to file legal action against the city.
Can, can I ask the question about the undue hardship part? Is it the catch-all? I, I didn't quite understand that earlier.
Wh- which?
You mentioned that there was, if there's an undue hardship, how does that analysis factor into these four factors? An undue hardship on the current owner if we were to deny the, the application?
So the used variance factors are listed in the staff report. You have A through D. Those are the things that you need to consider.
Right.
An undue hardship comes into play when we're talking about dimensional variances, typically.
I thought there was a discussion earlier about.
Was this undue hardship on the property owner? On page four, at the very top. Right before sample motion.
Yeah, yeah.
So it just says, we request the zoning board of appeals to determine if undue hardship exists on the property and the requested used variance should be granted.
So the standards you should be looking at when you're considering a used variance are the A through D. I'm guessing the undue hardship is kind of a carryover from our previous reports that are provided?
Okay.
But those are the used variance standards, A, B, C, and D.
So once again, I will state them. The building or land cannot be reasonably used for any of the uses permitted by right or by special use permit in the current zoning district. The need for the variance is due to unique circumstances or physical conditions of the property. The proposed use will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood. The need for the variance is not the result of the action of the property owners or previous property owners. So we need to answer all those questions the same, or else we cannot approve the variance. So I will ask you once again, would you like to postpone, or would you like us to vote?
I'll postpone.
Okay. So our next meeting is February, I just did these all on my calendar. I should have remembered.
Um, I hope.
Thirteenth, ninth?
Twelve.
Twelve, okay.
And you would need to make a motion to postpone.
Okay, so we need, so what we need to do now is the petitioner has asked that we postpone this, and we move it to our February twelfth meeting. Um, we do need a motion to do that and a support as well.
I'll make a motion to, to postpone.
Support.
I'll support.
All right, we will take a roll call for that.
Member Curial?
I s- I approve that.
Member Krug?
Yes.
Member McDonald?
Yes.
Member Seer?
Yes.
Member Willner?
No.
And Chair McAlpine?
Yes, you can come back to talk to us in February. All right, so you will come back. Uh, it will be at seven o'clock, the same location on February twelfth.
Which is a Mon- Monday, right?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much for your time.
Okay, so next up, um, would be other business. It's the, pertains to the twenty-twenty-four meeting schedule.
Yes.
Um, corrections to the August twenty-fourth date.
All right, so I do have a question on there. It says Monday, August thirteenth, but.
Should be Tuesday.
August thirteenth is a Tuesday, is a Tuesday. So is it Monday or is it Tuesday?
Yes, you're right. No, that's why it's being changed. So August twelfth, Monday, August twelfth, is a city council meeting. So, yes, so it'll be Tuesday, August thirteenth is what it will be moved to.
Tuesday.
And then we do have a meeting then in Columbus Day, correct? I thought in-
This city is, is open on Columbus.
Yeah, that's not one of our holidays.
When I looked at it, I was like, "Okay, that's fine," I just wanted to go- Okay. Um, and then, uh, the, any staff or board member report? I was not able to attend last night, if you wanna give us some updates on that.
Um, well, we have the, in the packet was the community development monthly report for, oh, we, did we, uh, get a motion on approval of the change of the date?
Oh, no, sorry. Take a motion to change the date, uh, for that August meeting, please.
Yeah, motion to approve, uh, just change that from a Monday to a Tuesday, yeah.
Well, Monday, the twelfth to Tuesday, the thirteenth. Yeah, and-
I'll support.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor of the change, aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Okay, all right, so for the staff report, uh, there's the community development monthly report for November and, just the November. And then the zoning ordinance steering committee activity updates was for December, we don't have Januaries yet.
No, but we do have the, um, zoning ordinance information sessions that are going on throughout the month of January. Joe, thank you for coming yesterday.
I had to leave early, but, let me say.
Appreciated, though, um, our first one was yesterday, it talked about the consolidation of zoning districts and the general overview. Um, from here on out, it will be every Wednesday from six to eight in the Collaborative Center, which is the big glass structure fronting on Catalpa at the high school. The next session is on, um, housing, mostly focused on multiple family. After that, we'll be talking about parking and then the last week will be development processes. So you're all welcome, you all have access to the Google Drive, we welcome any feedback or comments that you have.
Very good. Okay, uh, Councilman Henanin is unable to attend due to a conflict, so we do not have a liaison report, did he say something in that email?
Um, he didn't have anything to share, the city council did approve ordinances in December, um, first and second reading to establish parklets in the city, so that is the space where you can take up a parking space for outdoor seating, for dining. So that will be a, something that our department will be establishing a procedure for and we hope to have that in place for the spring. That is all that was on the December agenda that you would need to be aware of.
Okay, thank you, uh, there is no one here from the public, so we will not have any public comments. And we will go ahead and adjourn, uh, this evening's meeting at seven fifty-two and we will see everybody on February twelfth.
Get a motion?
We need a motion to adjourn, I'm sorry.
We do, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor of adjourning?
Aye.
Do we have anything else on that February twelfth me- agenda?
Yeah, there's, uh, two cases so far.
Wow.
And, uh, cutoff date is this Friday, so February will be a busy one.
Very good.